The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Okay, welcome everyone to the January 9th meeting, the first meeting of the year. And as is the custom, I will say a few words about the previous year and talk about the year to come. Good evening and welcome to the first council meeting of '23. Usually to be the first meeting of the year, we like to give a brief recap of the previous year's highlights. From the city's perspective, we were able to continue to pay down debt to the tune of $3 million. Actually, it was over that, probably closer to three and a half. Churchill Park was opened after major renovations. New bathrooms should be completed this year at Churchill Park. We also did major refurbishment of our iconic water tower, which will now service for many more years to come. This will enable us to supply water to the citizens under pressure even during a power outage. We also continued improvements to our pathways along with water main improvements to Lynn Crescent. We also did needed improvements to the streets, sidewalks, and park upgrades. We were happy to see the Market Mall improvements with more to come. That's the old shoppers mall for those that are not aware. Next year, we're looking at HVAC rooftop units for the leisure along with the new roof membrane. We would like to take this opportunity to thank Minister Carr and the province for their financial help in this regard. More infrastructure improvements will take place next year and a bio solids incinerator at the wastewater treatment plant. Also continued leachate monitoring at the landfill as well as major water main valve replacement in the core area. Some of the exciting milestones we had last year in our community. The Estevan Canets Kinsmen had another exciting year at Telemiracle. Congratulations, everyone involved. Ocean Man First Nations signed a landmark agreement with the federal government that recognized Ocean Man status as treaty four. There was a new anti-racism campaign that was brought to the leisure center in conjunction with city staff and Estevan settlement workers, transition services, and Southeast Newcomer Services. The Bruins became the 2022 Sask Junior Hockey League champs, the first time since 1999. We were very happy about that. We also hosted the 2022 Centennial Cup in Estevan, which was a fantastic event and showcased our community for a week to rave reviews. Thanks again, everyone involved. And our new clock that will be coming out of the Centennial Cup will be installed this spring at Affinity. We continue to work toward a new nursing home. Last year, the province put money in to move us toward the building stage, so we will continue to work toward that. In May, we celebrated the grand opening of the Southeast Innovation Business Development Center on 9th Ave. We also were selected as a smart community in 2022 by the Intelligent Community Forum. This was a worldwide competition, so we're pretty proud about that. Last fall, Estevan hosted the Western Canada Baseball Championships, and we were proud to win a title. Thanks again to all the volunteers and staff. We were also thrilled to win the Sirius XM Music Town Concert and host Dallas Smith. We would like to thank all those who participated and made this such a success. With 2030 fast approaching, we continue to lobby for continued use for coal for baseload power, at least until we can find a viable baseload replacement. This will be years away, but an option we are looking at is nuclear. We're competing with Elbow for a proposed site. We were proud of our own Erin Wilson, who was recognized for her years of service with the Red Cross and was inducted into the Order of the Red Cross last year. We were happy to host the Men's and Women's Masters Curling Provincial's last October and are excited to host events coming up in late January and early February. The Vitara Scotties Tournament of Hearts, Women's Curling, and the Sasktel Tankard Men's Curling Provincial's. In the summer, we paid tribute and commemorated a Karen to honor the 21 members of the Royal Canadian Air Force who died in a tragic plane crash at the old airport site in 1946. Thanks to all those involved in making this commemoration a success. We were happy to work with Minister Carr on the passing out of the Queen's Jubilee Medals on November 17th. We would like to congratulate all the recipients and wish that we had more to hand out, as there is always deserving individuals who get missed. Congrats to another successful United Way Telethon, although it was a nail-biter. Also, another successful Festival of Trees, thanks to all those involved. Thanks to all the people behind the Shoebox Program, Community Hammers, Angel Tree, Canettes, PJ Project. We can't thank you enough for helping those less fortunate. Again, thanks to the CP Holiday Train, which raised thousands to help fight hunger. Festival of Lights looks great again this year. We would like to welcome all of our new residents. We would also like to thank all those organizations that are helping our newest residents get settled in our community, such as Swiss, Sunflower Network, Transition Services, and Southeast Newcomer Services. With sadness, we acknowledge the passing of Dean Nagel, who was a mentor and a leader at our fire department, along with Melody Pearson, another great leader in our community and volunteer. On a positive note, we welcome Vicki Roy to Southeast Community College. We are looking forward to working with Vicki to doing some great things in our community. In closing, I would like to thank council for their support, along with our management team and staff. As we look forward to 2023, we will continue to be adaptable to change and future focused on the needs of our community. I would like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a happy and prosperous New Year, all the best in '23. So with that, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Thank you. Councillor Vroba, seconded by Councillor Clark, ready for the question. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the minutes of the council meeting held on December 19th, 2022? Thank you. Councillor Walleiser, seconded by Becca, sorry, Councillor Ford. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from SUMA, the election legislation support. Now, just to give a brief overview on that, we have requested, well, to begin with, the province decided, and they have the right to do so, to move the provincial election from the spring to the fall, which coincided somewhat with our municipal elections. So now, rather than have them both at the same time, and we weren't crazy about having ours in the middle of winter anyway, with all of the storms that we tend to get and everything else. So we have requested of the province that since they're going to, in the fall, toward winter, that we would rather go to the spring. So we have requested the province to give us a spring election date three times. As of yet, they have not agreed. They've said no every time. It's interesting because the chief electoral officer, Michael Boda, in his final report on the 2020 provincial election, he again called for a change to the municipal election date for Saskatchewan cities, towns, and villages. So we just wanted to keep council informed. SUMA is asking again with the hope that we'll be successful in changing our date to the spring. So I'll just read you a little bit. They're asking us to write a letter. All of the SUMA members in the province will be signing off on this. Our council is, and we will too if council agrees. Our council is writing to express our deep concerns about your choice to maintain the next municipal election date despite substantial feedback from SUMA, cities, towns, villages, and even the province's own chief electoral officer recommending a change. Our municipality stands united with other SUMA members in the need for change. The province's poorly considered decision to move the municipal election date into November has led to an additional risk of disruption by winter storms as seen in 2020 and to a substantial delay in necessary orientation, committee formation, budgeting, and year-end procedures for municipalities. And this is especially prevalent with the larger cities. While we value our partnership with school boards and respect that the Saskatchewan School Boards Association may prefer that our election date remain the same, municipalities must be the ones who decide when their elections are held. We pay for them, we staff them, and we protect the democratic process in our communities. And we also look after, by the way, the school boards' elections for them. We call upon the government to respect the wishes of those elected, to represent 80% of the population in Saskatchewan, which the cities, towns, and villages make up, as well as the advice of their own chief electoral officer and amend Bill 105, the Local Government Election Amendment Act, in committee, to change the election date to September of '24 for towns and villages and May 2025 for cities. So that would extend our tenure a few months, moving it into May to correct this inconsistency. So what is the wish of council? Councillor Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. I don't have a real strong feeling either way, but I do believe that after you've been rejected three times, it's maybe time for SUMA to move on, to do other things, whether we go ahead and do this and try it one more time. But there does come a point where you say, I think we've tried, and if we can't get it done, let's move on. As far as what we do with this one, I'm not strongly opposed or for.
You're okay either way? Okay. And that is a valid point. We have asked three times. We've been returned every time. But I know the larger cities are adamant that this take place because it is a big inconvenience for them. Councillor Vroba?
Unfortunately, it is true. Sometimes you just have to keep acting like this bad kid in the group that just keeps on having to ask too many times until they say yes. But it actually would be a benefit to move it to May, only for the fact that as being a new councillor, when you come on council in November, especially if all new council, if it changes over and you have, like, say, six out of six or seven out of seven, it's pretty hard to put a budget together for a city, especially the size of Estevan, Regina, Saskatoon, would be 10 times more difficult. So I would be in favor that it does move to May. So I do think it's worth it to just do it one more time. And then I also agree with Councillor Clark that if they're not listening to us this time, then maybe when we do SUMA in April, we can have our voice heard louder at the bear pit.
Good point. Are you making that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship. Have they given any explanation as to why they keep denying this? Like, surely they would think that this is also an issue with their own election.
Well, that's a very good point. And to be quite honest, and we can talk to Minister Carr when she comes, she'll be coming early in the year here at one of our next meetings. Why they decided to do that? Because I would think by having the provincial election in the spring, which they moved from, you know, everybody's, at least all of the farming community is optimistic with the new crop coming up. I don't know why they would ever move from a spring to where they did. I don't understand that. Maybe she could explain better. And I also don't understand why they keep refusing, because I do believe it's valid, especially for the larger cities, to do this, to have it in the spring. Because why would you want to fight in the middle of winter to go out? And that's why our attendance tends to be, I'm not saying it'll pick up dramatically, but it tends to be around 30%, which is pretty low. But again, if you're having a bad storm that day, like Saskatoon did, and they spent over $1 million trying to get all the equipment out and to clear it for people to vote, I mean, it was a mess.
Yeah, so I'll second the motion. I guess my one thought was just that maybe we'll bring that up with Minister Carr when she comes. I don't know if SUMA wants to maybe just express, we don't care what day you move it to, just move it so they're not two weeks apart again. That would be my overall vision, but.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good comment. Councillor Frank, that was a nightmare. It really was. And, you know, I'm speaking for the city clerk. It makes it very difficult. Councillor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. And just to note that the, or SUMA did push to have this in May of 2024 election, so they were going to actually cut all of our terms by six months. And the government said, no, no, that's not enough time. That's not enough time to change that. And they said no to that. And then, so now we're pushing for the 2025. So they said no, and then, so we, SUMA's kind of rearranged what their plans are. So I know that was one of the reasons. They said, oh, that's not enough time. So that's the reason for the extension of the six months as opposed to the taking back six months.
Exactly. Good point. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Okay. Thank you very much. Next, under written reports of committees, we have the Creighton Lodge minutes of November 14th. Could we have a motion, please, to adopt these? Councillor Walleiser, seconded by Councillor Clark. Councillor Vroba, would you like to, do you have anything to add to the minutes?
Sure. Actually, I was just going to mention that the Creighton Lodge Trust Committee just finalized their plans. They're going to be doing a game show type fundraiser, April 22nd, 2023. So everyone should save their dates. I heard there's going to be some great fabulous prizes, and it's going to be a good night with a dance to follow. And we're actually going to do it at the Curling Club this year, so the Power Dodge Curling Rink, so we can sell more tickets, have a bigger and better fundraiser, and we're talking about building onto a brand-new kitchen so that one day we could possibly expand. So we have to be able to feed them all. So we got a lot of great plans coming up at Creighton Lodge. And yeah, so April 22nd, 2023, if anyone would like to come and support us, we would welcome to have you. And Councillor Frank is also the rep on the Creighton Lodge Board, so he might have something to add.
Okay. So who's going to be Vanna White? You or Councillor Frank?
Councillor Frank.
Councillor Frank will be Vanna White? Okay.
I'm way less pretty there, Councillor.
Well, we'll let you two fight it out. Councillor Frank, did you have anything to add?
No, I just wanted to share that, and I know all of council will try to make it as well.
Okay. Thank you for that. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under written reports of committees, we have the Southeast Transportation Planning Committee minutes of November 22nd. Could we have a motion, please, for those? Thank you. Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Sernick. Any comments you'd like to add? Councillor?
Thanks, Your Worship. Probably the first meeting that we have this year, it's a couple of weeks where we are funded partially by the government and partially by membership. So we are coming up short. So we have three proposals. One is to do the status quo and run a deficit and deal with it next year. Another would be to decrease the number of meetings or to decrease the meetings frequency and increase the fees. I don't think it'll be a substantial amount. I think for the city of Estevan, it's about $65. It would go up if we put a fee increase. But we're going to have that discussion at the next meeting as a group. And there are some, some of the organizations have done a good job of promoting it to some of the smaller centers to get them involved and some of the ones along the number-one highway there. So one thing we want to do is make sure that we're not going to drive away any new membership on that. So we'll have that discussion at the next meeting, and I'll let you know how that turns out. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Clark, and thank you for doing that. Less meetings, you know, to save the money rather than run a deficit. I think that's a good idea. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have from the Water Services Manager, our Water Quality Report for December. I'll give a brief overview. The Environmental Management and Protection Act state that the operator staff of the water treatment plant must inform the owner, council, of the quality of water leaving the treatment facility monthly. I present this report. We treated a total of 93,771,100 liters of water and pumped 91,970,000 liters into the distribution system for the month. There was no plant upsets, and all regulated parameters for drinking water were met. Under the Water Security Agency guidelines, we are to inform the owner, council, of breaks within the distribution system. We operate under a self-governing approval or approved process to ensure breaks are repaired correctly and public safety is ensured. There were no water breaks for the month of December, and all of our testing met the parameters. So could we have a motion, please, to accept that? Thank you. Councillor Ford, seconded by Councillor Vroba. Thank you.
I just had a comment, sorry.
Sure.
I just wanted to say it's pretty impressive that we did not have any water breaks throughout the whole month of December. And so some of that can be attributed to the fact that we do take away the snow as quickly as it comes, right?
Yeah, that's one of the things that helped, Councillor Vroba. And the other thing, we've been doing some serious repairing to our water mains over the last few years, and now it's starting to bear fruit. Because as you remember, we used to have many water breaks right through the winter, and especially in the spring and the fall during the thaw cycle, because that's when everything heaves.
Well, knock on wood that we didn't just jinx it, but I just think that's kudos to a lot of different areas of our staffing that are making sure that doesn't happen. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have the Building Inspector Permit for December. Please, could we have a motion to accept that? Thank you. Councillor Walleiser, seconded by Councillor Sernick. All in favor? Carried. Next, under executive reports, we have the Fire Report for November and December, and it looks good. We had seven false alarms for November, four vehicle accidents, two gas leak alarms, two fire-related calls. So the false alarms, $1,834. Motor vehicle accidents, 1,016, sorry. Gas leak, monoxide alarm, 600. Fire-related calls, 428. Fuel leak, zero. Training, 3,408. For a total expense of $133,758. And then December, false alarm, 16. Motor vehicle accidents, seven. Gas leaks, four. Fire-related calls, six. Fuel leak, zero. Training activity, two. And that was a total expense for the month of $151,786.
Your Worship, those are year-to-date expenses.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I was just looking at the bottom.
I just didn't want to give the impression to the public that we were spending $151,000.
Oh, yeah, well, that's just the two months. But the year-to-date, yeah, because this was last year, the $88,000 on the last page.
Yeah, so it just says year-to-date on mine, $151,786. And the year-to-date revenue is $148,567.
Okay. Good. Thank you. So all in favor? We have a motion?
No, all in motion.
Okay. Thank you. Secretary, Councillor Clark. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay. Next, under introduction of bylaws, we have bylaw 2022-2062, changing street name to Dryden Road, first reading. And that will be out 47 North, leaving our community on the right-hand side. We will be changing that to Dryden Road so that when they have, heaven forbid if they ever have an accident, but if they need an ambulance, they can have the proper moniker so they can get there. So we will have first reading this evening, and then we will leave it for a couple of weeks, and then give second or third at our next council meeting. So do we have a motion for bylaw 2022-2062, changing street name to Dryden Road, first reading? Thank you. Councillor Sernick, seconded by Councillor Walleiser. Questions or comments? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Under public hearings and reports, we have none this evening, giving notice, none. Motion from committee, none. Consideration of bylaws, none. Inquiries. Councillor Vroba?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just had two things. First, to the city manager, the sidewalk clearing, when we do that, I noticed, I brought this up last year, on King Street and again on Suris Avenue going down from Forest Street down into the Willow Greens Taylor Park. Those are two areas that a lot of young families, maybe that don't have the modes of transportation, use a lot to walk into the city center to be able to get the basic needs for their families.
The gravel portion?
No, I'm talking about the actual sidewalk, the whole way down. If you go down it, and I found out from Rod, what part of the problem is, is the sidewalk is quite high there compared to the other areas of the city. Because I noticed going down Kensington, going down our pathways, we clear it right to the bone, like, it looks super great, and we're doing a fabulous job, as we are with our snow clearing. However, I believe it's an issue with our equipment. And so if we have the ability or chance to purchase any other equipment or find something that could fix that issue, I think those two would be very valuable spots to be able to find something to clear properly with. Just because if you ever try and walk down there, and I've walked in myself, but I've also been really noticing people lately, moms with small children having to walk a single file, and the pathway's quite limited. And so it's just very, it's not very safe, in my opinion. But again, I'd just like us to maybe take a look at that and see if we can find the proper equipment out there, price it out, see if it's in our budget, so that we can clear those areas properly. And then the other thing is, January is a really good time to sign up with the city for paying your taxes. So you can do that through our pre-authorized plan. I actually took the city manager's advice and did it myself. It was painless. And so you sign up in January, they divide your payment into 12 months, and you basically have your taxes paid annually without having to show up here every year with that full amount, so.
Or you could pay the lump sum amount in January, and I believe, city treasurer, you give 3%? City manager?
2.5% on the municipal portion.
2.5% on the municipal portion?
Yes, that's a good discount. There was quite a few people in line that morning. I was here on January 3rd, I believe, and there was people there paying the full amount, but I decided to do the 12 installments, so hopefully it's a pain-free July for me this year.
Yeah, absolutely. And I believe, city manager, we use the broom to clear our sidewalks and pathways, do we not?
Yes, we do. I'll have to clarify with Rod exactly what the discussion was.
Yeah, because if we get out in time, the broom takes it right down to the sidewalk or the pathway.
Yeah, it's what the issue is with just those two streets is because the height of the actual sidewalk is higher than most of them in the city. So one wheel of the machinery is on the road, and the other wheel is on the sidewalk. So if you drive down and notice that the actual walkway of those two sidewalks never get the full extent of what should happen, so they're very, very narrow. So it would be, it would be actually, we have to purchase a new piece of equipment in order to do that, but I think that is something Rod is working on.
You would need a baby bobcat with a baby broom that would fit on this tiny little sidewalk.
Well, the sidewalk's the right size until we shovel it, and then it becomes a tiny sidewalk. You're right.
But a small broom and bobcat would do that, then.
We might, if one of us.
As long as it's not a big one, that it would slip off on the one side.
That's right. Or we need something with bigger tires, I think, would work, too.
Or a great, great big bobcat that would straddle the whole sidewalk and sweep everything clean. But I'm sure we have people that could take care of that.
Yes, Rod wasn't too concerned with my concern. He seemed to have it all under control, but I just thought, I wanted to bring it up tonight just so that in the event that Rod did find the perfect piece of equipment and brought it to council, then we'd all be aware, because that will give us time to actually take a look at the two areas, too, and then we'd all be informed in our decision-making when we have to vote on it, if we do. Rod may be able to find it in his budget, and we won't even have to bring it to council.
Or we could get a tiny bobcat with a V-blade.
Or we can go back to letting the mayor try and figure this out, but I don't think, I think I'm going to leave it to Rod.
The problem with the sidewalk, with unevenness, with the V-blade, you'd be going full blast, it'd hit the sidewalk that would be up half an inch, and then the bobcat operator would be throwing about 30 feet. So maybe, but we'll leave that up to Rod.
I was also thinking, since you are retired from your actual other job, you could maybe just go out there and try it out a few times and perfect it.
Why don't I just go out, Councillor Vroba, and shovel it by hand? I mean, that would be good exercise for the. I mean, that would be good exercise for the mayor.
That would work too.
Okay, well, thank you for your many thoughtful suggestions. I'm overwhelmed.
They're mostly yours.
Okay, Councilor Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. Obviously, we received great reports on all of our snow removal. And I know that we have said in the new year, we'll get back to doing some pathway clearing. Do we have a plan? Are we going to clear all of the pathways? Are we going to clear certain ones? Or is there, I'm getting some questions about, are we going to do this one? By Sarkhan was the one they were asking. I wonder, are we going to try to keep up to it all? Or are we just going to do the ones that are, that we're able to?
Thank you, Councilor Clark. I know I just returned today, but there was an operations meeting last week, and there was a discussion that NORMAC and Rod March were going to touch base on this to figure out a plan. So I will touch base with them this week and get a report to council.
Thank you. Yeah, and what happened, Councilor Clark, we did fall behind a bit with that large snowfall. I believe most of the pathways now are caught up and are finished. If not, they soon will be. But we did fall behind with that large amount of snow. And of course, with that, we have priorities, one, two, and three. And then the pathways are left until we're done and get even the streets more in shape, and then we'll do the pathways.
Thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, and I think that's what our citizens would probably want. They want the streets done first and that. But I know that we, once we were done, then people were asking about the pathways. So just to get that clarified, I appreciate that.
Yep, thank you. Councilor Wolizer?
Thank you, Your Worship. As you know, I've also been getting lots of calls about the snow clearing. So I was really interested to learn that each of the significant snow events in December took 60 hours to clear the entire city, which I think is pretty incredible, especially when you read the headlines from other cities around Saskatchewan that certainly did not have all roads cleared within 60 hours of the snow falling. I know we had talked about a report coming to council from Norm so that everybody knows a little bit more about the priority ratings, but also where we store snow, where we haul snow within the city. So I'm excited to see that. The other thing I thought the community should know is that during the Christmas break, council took a guided tour of St. Joseph's Hospital. We were met by Greg Hoffer, as well as the chairman of the Emmanuel Health Board, Don Kindoff. And they showed us both the facility, but also talked a little bit about what the role of Emmanuel Health is within the broader Saskatchewan health region. So I'm also looking forward to have them coming to present and really helping our community understand the services that we have available.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Wolizer. And yeah, Greg said he would be coming. I don't know about next meeting, but probably the following month, he will come and give a presentation. And the offer stands, Councilor Sernick. If you like, you and I could go, and he will give us a tour of the hospital. Okay, Councilor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. But just another congratulations to Woodlawn on another successful Festival of Lights this year. I know I toured it about three or four times. It was phenomenal this year, as it is every year. And, I mean, all the businesses and people in the community who do such a good job on that, congratulations to everybody. And just a couple of quick things. The Innovation Center, which you touched on a little bit, will be hosting or offering some courses here in the coming month and month and a half. Gord Moore is in charge of that. So if you want to see what's happening there, he's got a Facebook, there's a Facebook page of the Southeast Innovation Center. And yeah, and if you want to just go and stop in and see what's happening there, you'd be, everybody would be happy to greet you there too and see what kind of course offerings there are.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilor Ford. Councilor Sernick?
Thank you, Your Worship. Nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
Nothing, Your Worship.
Oh, sorry, before I go to city manager. I haven't forgot about you, buddy. You're right in front of me on the screen. Councilor Frank?
I have nothing. Just stay healthy, everyone.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, it's unfortunate you're under the weather, but thank you for staying home and not contaminating the rest of us. God bless you for that. City clerk, anything?
Nothing, Your Worship.
Okay, city treasurer? Okay, with that, could we have a motion, please, to move into committee? To adjourn. Thank you. Councilor Sernick, seconded by Councilor Ford. All in favor? Carried. We stand adjourned. Good night, everyone.